Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Everyone. I'm just kidding. All right, everybody's in a good mood today. That's awesome. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the City of Bloomington Township. And if everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please call the role?
Trustee Walsh. Trustee Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Montney.
Here.
Trustee Imig.
Present.
Trustee Becker.
Here.
Trustee Urban.
Here.
Trustee Ward.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Crumpler.
Here.
Trustee, trustee Millerwongway.
Here. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin, second by trustee Crable. Madam Clerk, oh, the link?
Here, if it's easier, I'll just go ahead and call it.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Imig.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Millerwongway.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is a motion to accept the proposed fiscal year 2024 budget as requested by the township supervisor. And I believe this will be placed on file for a 30-day review period. Is there such a motion?
I make such motion.
Okay, motion by trustee Crable and the second by trustee Bowlin. Do we have any comments?
I don't have any comments on the budget. But I did want to say that 30-day time period might take us into March before we actually have the... I'm not sure where we stand on that right now, but usually it might mean two months of review because of that February shortened timeframe, so I haven't reviewed that necessarily. So, and then the proposed budget is available in the panograph we posted as, as necessary to do.
Thank you. Questions or I guess not? So let's vote.
All right, trustee Walsh.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Montney.
Yes.
Trustee Imig.
Yes.
Trustee Becker.
Yes.
Trustee Urban.
Yes.
Trustee Ward.
Aye.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Crumpler.
Yes.
Trustee Millerwongway.
Yes. So next item is reports by elected officials and starting with the township supervisor's desk code.
I wanted to inform you that we've been working with Madam Clerk regarding the DocuSign and the Peak, I think you call it iLegislate. I'm, uh, we're trying to streamline together. You can see that our agendas are similar, but we're going to use the same programming, so it streamlines a little bit of what we're doing. And if you have any additional comments, feel free to add to it.
Yeah, not many. Um, just really, she hit on it, the legislative management software that you're familiar with, Peak, and then iLegislate that you see your agendas and packets come out in. We're going to use that. And one of the things that it will do is it'll allow posting to be streamlined, kind of going along with that, you know, if a resident knows how to do one thing, they'll know how to do it with others. And we're rolling it out with all of our city boards and commissions as well. So it'll be streamlined, kind of learn one process and know how to do it all. And so I've been working with the township to be able to do that as well. I'm excited about it. And then looking to, at some point, align public comment under similar rules too. So it's kind of, if you know how to do something in Bloomington, you know how to do something in Bloomington, which I think is great. Thanks.
Okay. So amended DocuSign would be to sign these...
The board packet or the financial statements. So, yeah, and then I, I just wanted to update you on the success of the here program. We've saved, and, and I think if you've read your supervisor, the supervisors know, it's 26 families or individuals from the potential eviction process. So we've caught them up in their arrears so that they're feeling comfortable moving forward. Since then even, we're up to about 49,000 right now as of today. So it's moving along. In the budget, you'll note that we put 150,000 toward that. We believe there probably, there may be remainder, but we'll assess it and probably maybe even bump that up to 200,000 so that we know that we can make that change. If it's necessary, we'll, we'll be able to provide for it. So you may see an amendment to this slightly because of that.
Any questions about it?
Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to township assesses use cutter.
Good evening. We finished up the 2022 assessment year with the border review in December. Our anticipation was a lot heavier of an appeal load. We were thinking with the adjustment made at the county level to all the assessments across the city. We didn't see a, a large spike at all. So it's kind of, uh, it's, uh, you wait for the storm and it never hits. So we're kind of just rolling with it right now. We're not expecting any difference in 2023. We're already seeing with the three-year average being used, we have another year of high sale prices coming into the evaluation. So we're still anticipating larger increases in 2023 to the assessments based on those numbers that we're seeing. But we still got a lot of work to do for 2023 and we're just getting started. So if you have any questions.
Questions? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We received no registered public comment or email.
Okay, thank you. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by trustee Bowlin. Second by trustee Urban. Hold this in favor of saying aye.
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 Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, good evening, everyone. The time is now six o'clock PM, not AM. Just in case you were wondering. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Bloomington City Council. And if everyone could stand, if you're able to, for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
A pledge to agents with the flag of the United States of America. As to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Here.
Councilmember Montney.
Here.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Becker.
Here.
Councilmember Urban.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Present.
Councilmember Krempler.
Here.
Mayor Milla Wambly.
Here. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do. We have four people that will speak in person. No one registered remotely, and we received no emailed public comment.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It is also an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment and show respect for the expression of our views, speakers should maintain civility and focus on city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in threatening or disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order, and their time will be seized. When you reach three minutes, I will stop you, not because I want to be rude, just as a matter of fairness, that's all. Can we add the first person?
Yeah, so the first one is Jackie Byer, and then to follow, Carla Bailey Smith.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Byer. No donuts tonight. But I first want to give a belated thank you to the Public Works Department, who filled in the sinkhole in front of my house. I backed my car out of my driveway when the street gave way underneath my car. They did a great job in doing so. However, the city really needs to start contracting out more work to get our streets and sewers repaired and replaced. I also wanted to share that the McLean County Emergency Management Agency lists the existing library as a warming center and has for years. It has also been reported as a warming center by media outlets. So it is an option now, as long as the library is open on those brutally cold days. So people in need of warmth do not need to wait until the library renovation is complete. Every three months, there is a chief's meeting where Brent Parsley, our public information officer, shares a wealth of information and crime data. The last meeting was on December 7th, and I'm sure that he'd be happy to share that information with you. Additional data is easily accessible and free to the requister through FOIA requests and through data already published online from the Police Department, Health Department, Coroner's Office, and more. Bloomington taxpayers fund the collection, maintenance, and reporting of the data, the maintenance of their websites, as well as the time and effort to respond to FOIA requests. There is also a community crime and police activity map that is accessible from the Police Department website. It is an excellent tool for crime information. You are able to select various different crime types, and the location of those crimes will be mapped out. It creates a nice visual of the violent crime hotspots, as well as other crimes. Just as taxpayers fund the $500,000 Illinois Violence Prevention Grant, taxpayers have already funded existing academic research, such as Dr. Beck's. Such continuing research will come out of the $2.484 billion budget for colleges, universities, and community colleges that taxpayers are funding for fiscal year 2022. Any academic research would be conducted at a high level. However, such deep data needs to be drilled down to the street level to answer questions of why, where, and how. The police are on the street level every single day. They are best suited to make the decisions on how to best use these grant funds to make a true difference. Reallocating $35,000 away from this grant for unnecessary research is a waste of taxpayer money and takes away from tangible crime prevention measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Next up is Carla Bailey Smith, and to follow, Jennifer Golladay.
Hello, my name is Carla Bailey Smith, and I'm here tonight as a member of McLean County Moms Demand Action.
Okay, excuse me, is the mic on? I don't feel like it is.
Is it? I think yes.
Is it?
Okay.
Maybe get a little closer.
All right. I'm here, I'm here tonight as a member of McLean County Moms Demand Action against gun violence. I understand that the plan for using the Violence and Crime Reduction Grant money will not be voted on this evening. I still wish to express our concern as an organization that supports gun violence survivors and supports gun safety measures, that more money should be spent on actual prevention rather than catching offenders with additional technology. Our own police chief has acknowledged that we cannot arrest our way out of crime. We have to continue to look at crime prevention and restorative practices. As you move forward with approving allocation of grant money, I hope you, as the council members, will take all options under consideration and that you are able to take some time to make decisions based on evidence of crime trends right here in Bloomington. Please look at the demographics of the perpetrators and seek programs and services that will divert criminal behavior and actions and any sustaining measures to reduce gun crime and gun violence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carla.
So next up will be Jennifer Golladay, and then last will be John Morrissey.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Okay. Hello, I am Jennifer Golladay, and I'm here from the YWCA Stepping Stones. I'm here more of an information sharing purpose only. The YWCA McLean County, founded in 1908, has served the needs of the community as they have shifted over time, including the addition and expansion of services. YWCA established Stepping Stones, McLean County's Rape Crisis Center, more than 20 years ago due to an unmet community need. Stepping Stones is a free confidential program, providing medical and legal advocacy, as well as an individual and group counseling for sexual assault, abuse, and stalking survivors, as well as their loved ones. Our highly trained staff and volunteers are available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Stepping Stones community educators work with schools, churches, and businesses to educate on a variety of prevention topics, including Aaron's Law and sexual harassment. We staff a 24-hour hotline and provide medical advocacy for survivors at the hospital upon reporting assault. During the two years of the pandemic, we provided 6,832 hours of counseling to 533 clients, 812 hours of direct service through hotline calls and hospital visits, and have reached more than 25,000 K through 12 students through prevention education. Stepping Stones' education awareness and promotion events reach hundreds of thousands of individuals annually, working diligently to ensure a community is a safer place for all. I am sharing this information with you all today in an effort to ensure that everyone in Bloomington is aware of these services and knows how to access them. The number for our hotline is 309-556-7000. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, last up is John Morrissey.
Up here tonight for the second time within probably a couple, two or three months. I've got a problem that seems like the city evidently thinks it's not their problem. But I've got a manhole out at the corner of Center and Lincoln Street that when a semi crosses the top of it, it jars the ground. And I can feel it in my house, and it's starting to take a toll on my foundation. And I'm not going to keep coming up and arguing about it. I'm going to sit back, and when my foundation gives out and my house comes down, you're going to hear from an attorney, because I will sue the city for not taking care of a problem that exists from a long time ago when they made Center Street a highway out of a residential street. And that's about all I've got to say tonight. But something's going to happen sooner or later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Got my witness that I was here tonight.
There's no further public comment.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the recognition and appointment of a proclamation for health for humanity Yogathon, as requested by the Administration Department. And I believe we have Mr. Sudhir Bhai.
Yeah.
Okay, if you want to come forward to accept the proclamation. If you can stand at the podium while I read it, and then I'll give you a chance to say a few words if you like. So there are quite a few words here that will be challenging for me to pronounce, which is a new one for me. Usually, I'm on the other side. But when I do, if I do mispronounce them, you know, just smile and nod.
No problem.
Okay, actually, you can correct me. I want to know how to pronounce them. It's always interesting to be able to learn new words. Whereas yoga is an ancient Hindu practice, developed thousands of years ago in the Indian subcontinent for maintaining spiritual, mental, and physical well-being. And whereas Surya Namaskar.
That's correct.
Okay, awesome. Which is a sun salutation, is a traditional yogic practice combining a sequence of postures with breathing exercises that provides the key health benefits of yoga in a very succinct package. And whereas Hindu Swamvad.
Correct.
Okay, awesome. Feeling good about myself. Sang and/or HSS is a nonprofit charitable organization with over 235 branches in 164 cities and in 34 states, including Illinois, through which it conducts a Hindu values education program for the Hindu families and community service activities, such as food drives, providing hot meals to shelters, and other siwa.
That's correct.
Okay. And siwa means service. Activities in several cities across the USA. And whereas HSS is conducting the 18th consecutive annual awareness program, Health for Humanity, which is a nationwide effort to promote friendship, mutual understanding, and good health among multicultural and diverse members of the community. And whereas yoga enthusiasts, yoga studios, local schools, and other community organizations are participating in the HSS Health for Humanity Yogathon. And whereas the Health for Humanity program will be conducted January 14th through 29th, so there's still time, if you want to join, 2023, and will be free and open to all people for learning a unique set of yoga postures called Surya Namaskar.
Surya Namaskar, yeah.
Okay. Yoga enthusiasts and local organizations are participating in this event. And now, therefore, I, Mboka Malambwe, mayor of the city of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim January 14th through 29th, 2023, as Health for Humanity Yoga Awareness Period in Bloomington, and urge residents to join Health for Humanity Yogathon.
Dear Mayor, sir, I, as a representative of HSS and the Hindu community of Bloomington Normal, would like to thank the city council for their continued support. This is the 18th year of the Health for Humanity Yogathon, and probably as many years of proclamation that we have received from the city council. The ancient years of Hinduism, when they envisaged the practice of yoga and as the title of the Yogathon, Health for Humanity, that was precisely the concept when they envisaged the practice of yoga. It was never sectarian in nature. It was all encompassing. It was for everybody, like health for humanity. As we are talking, as we are in the 18th year of the Yogathon, we have reached more than 50, more than 40 states of United States in which about 300 to 350 centers have conducted yoga, have participated in this Yogathon. As Mayor rightly said, that HSS US does a lot of service activities. So we do Yogathon nationally. We do it in Bloomington. We do food drives. We do it nationally. We do it in Bloomington also. In conclusion, I would request everyone, as you, when you said about yoga and its spiritual, physical, and mental benefits, psychological benefits. If you take, dear mayor, sorry, if you take a straw poll in this, in this conference room of how many of them probably does yoga, you'll find that at least one in 10% does yoga, and that's precisely the number outside this conference room also. Nationwide, pan-nation, about one in 10%. About 30 million people do yoga every day as of, for several benefits. Physical benefit is being the main, one of the main. Again, I would like to thank the city council for providing us an opportunity to, for this proclamation, honoring us with this proclamation, and we, as a part of Hindu community, would like to assure everyone here and the city council that we continue to serve the community to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are moving next to the consent agenda, and I do believe that we, we might have had some items that need to be pulled.
I'd like to pull 7E.
Okay, 7E. Okay, all right. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the, with the exception of 70? And was that Councilmember Ward?
It was.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so moved by Councilmember Ward, and then second by Councilmember Bowlin. And, okay, there is a link. Is this where we play the Jeopardy music?
We can just go ahead and put it up. Councilmember Ward, you were actually the first motioner, so I think we're safe on that. Thank you. I just made a refresh.
Yes, okay, so the item passes. There are no nays to announce. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to item 7E. Councilmember Montney.
So I'm pulling 7E, not because I have specific questions, really. It's more about priorities and opportunity cost. But what we're being asked to do is to spend $270,000 over a three-year period for a lobbying agreement for an organization that describes itself as a next-generation government affairs firm with the ability to deliver a triple-threat toolbox of in-house capabilities with traditional lobbying, policy depth, and strategic communications. My observation is this, this, this item was brought to us here today as a consent item. And at the same time, I'm reminded of about a year ago, when a proposal was made to consider retaining services to support the community and helping run our service operations more effectively, more efficiently, and delivering in turn better customer service to our community. And while I never saw the proposal, I think it was in the $40,000 range. And that was described as an exorbitant amount of money and something that was too significant for us to move forward. So as I think about that, and just the column this week in the Panograph talking about the most talked-about civic issues that we have in our community are about better streets, fiscal responsibility, lower taxes, leaves, brush, and so forth. It just seems to be inconsistent with our priorities that this would be presented to us on a consent agenda today, representing a significant investment. Whereas the fundamental customer service delivery that we have here in our community continues to suffer. I just don't feel it is right. It just doesn't set well with me that this would be our priority.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. You know, I actually agree with Councilmember Montney, I guess, and maybe I feel a bit naive here. I mean, it just seemed like this was a lot of money to spend for, you know, Thorn Run Partners, you know, and if you, if you look in, you know, to them, they, they are a national organization. They, they represent like 70-some organizations. And, and I, and I don't, you know, to, you know, I would never pretend to be an expert on lobbying organizations. But, but I wonder, you know, how are we a priority in this organization? I, I guess I would just like to know a bit more about what, what we can expect as a council from, if this money, you know, is spent. You know, do other communities have similar lobbying organizations working for their behalf? I, I just feel like agreeing that this came on the consent agenda, and I just wasn't quite sure what all the ramifications might be.
Thank you. I'll take a shot at that, Mayor and members of council. In terms of securing the services of a lobbying firm, we don't feel as though it's about competing priorities. It's about making an intentional effort to secure funding for the things that you have set our priorities for you. And the timing of this is critical in terms of Congress is starting to decide how they're going to allocate their, their discretionary funding. And so getting on the radar of those congresspeople is critical now. It absolutely is. You would, some would argue, is this something that we can do internally? It absolutely is not. There are thousands of pieces of legislation that are filed regularly, and those aren't things that we have the expertise to be able to track. This company has proven that they have a track record of being able to secure funding for things like road infrastructure, which is a need here, for things like electric vehicle infrastructure, which is obviously a need here, for things like safe water, which is obviously a need here as well. And so Thorn Run, we, we had, we had a national RFP for a company to come in and help us to secure services to provide that work. They were head and shoulders above everyone else who, who, who applied. I will tell you that our neighbors to the north and other neighboring communities do in fact utilize lobbying firms to help secure funding. And as you talk about that, one of the things I would say is that I would look at some of the missed opportunities that perhaps other communities and other entities have, where they've received funding, where we in fact have not, and those are, they're entities that have utilized lobbying firms to do the type of work that we're asking Thorn Run to do. And it's not just about money. It's not just about receiving funding. It's also about advocating for us in the halls of Congress, having someone who has their ear in the halls of Congress, listening to legislation, hearing what's being proposed, so that they can advocate for us as well as part of that process. That's not something that you can do from here. If, if you're going to be intentional about securing funding, if you're going to be intentional about having someone advocate for you, you have to have someone in DC that's there each and every day doing the work. All right, you, you talk about the, the lost opportunities and the missed opportunities. I mentioned our neighbors to the north, who received $13 million in build funding in 2019. You talk about last year alone, there was $22 million in the state of Illinois that was allocated to, to cities throughout the state. You talk about a Connect Transit as an example, who also utilizes the services of a lobbying firm, who has received more than $50 million over the last several years. And so I only say that to say that if we are going to move forward with having someone to assist us in funding some of the priorities that you yourselves have talked about are important to you, then this is a critical step for us. And again, as I said, the, the timeline for securing some of that funding is, is starting now. So the timing of bringing this to you now, that's why it's happening now.
Councilmember Kribba.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to compare this to the relationship we've had with Julie Currie, I think, since the, since I was on council. And, you know, comparing what she did with what this new firm will do, whether it will be both federal and state, and just like, I'm, I'm sure we paid Julie or her firm, you know, compensation. So how does that compare?
In terms of the level of compensation, compensation, and obviously it would have been less because her work was on the state level, not necessarily on the federal level. And her services were related to state-related funding opportunities and state-related issues versus a Thorn Run, which is doing work on the federal level. Again, I don't want to overemphasize the financial part of it all and securing funding. That's important, but it's not everything related to what we're asking for today. The advocacy part of all of this is critical in terms of having someone in the halls of Washington who is, is tracking legislation, who is able to say, hey, City of Bloomington, there is consideration for an item that covers something that may perhaps you want to know about, you want to make your voice heard. Companies like this are able to do this. And speaking directly to a Thorn Run, I think it's important to note that they're a nationally recognized company as well. They're rated by Politico as one of the top lobbying firms in Washington DC. They're rated by Bloomberg as one of the, one of the up-and-coming companies as well in terms of lobbyists. And so I think, how do I say it? I believe that if, again, we are going to be intentional and going after some of the funding to help fund priorities like roadwork and bridges and water quality, et cetera, et cetera, this is a critical step towards being able to do that.
Councilmember Ward.
Yeah, I guess I'd, I'd just like to have some interaction with them. It, it feels like our only role as a city council, based on the way this is being brought forward, is, is kind of to say, yeah, rubber stamp, spend the money. But I'd like, let me finish. I'd like to have some interaction because I do think it is important to have somebody advocating for the, the priorities. But I would like, as a city council, an elected city council member, to be able to basically speak for myself and speak for the people of my ward directly to someone like that, to give voice to the priorities of, of this group. And it, it feels like having it kind of slip in on a consent agenda doesn't really provide a, an opportunity for us to, to get to know these people who supposedly are, are needing to give voice to the people we're giving voice to.
I don't disagree, and I didn't turn my light on to cut you off. I apologize for that. And, and what I would say to that is you're absolutely right. What would happen next in the event that you approve this item tonight is that Thorn Run would come here and they would work with you and staff and others to develop a federal agenda to determine what it is that we would, we would pursue in terms of both funding and also advocacy. So that would be the next step in the process, for them to come forward and have conversations with you, each of you, and to have conversations with staff, and to, and to listen to our concerns and listen to our needs, and develop that agenda to determine, like you said, what to go after, what might be important for us to consider, et cetera, et cetera. So that would be the next step in the process.
Is there a timetable for something like that?
We have, we have, we have not set a, a schedule for a date to come, but I would say within the next several weeks to month that they will need to get here. Because, as I said, the timetable for determining what our legislators are going to, to dedicate funding to is starting. And so while I don't have an exact date, I would say within the next month or so. But I would appreciate the opportunity to be able to confirm an actual date.
Sorry, Councilmember Walsh, and then Montney and Emig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take a little bit of issue here, Billy, with saying that we need to pay someone to go to Washington and to go to Springfield to advocate for us. We already do so. We have elected officials in Springfield. We have elected officials in DC that should be fighting for us and speaking for us. In my short time here on the council, now, obviously, I can't expect an elected official that's in DC or Springfield to be here every meeting. Have we ever seen one here in this chamber that come to our meetings? I don't think we have. And when our, we are being asked to approve money, to, to, to spend mon, taxpayer money, because our elected officials in Springfield and in DC seem to be absent. And we should be able to, and we, as a council, can pick up the phone and we, we can look up their telephone numbers and we should call, be, be able to call them, and we can advocate to those elected officials ourselves and say, hey, these are the things we need in Bloomington, Illinois. And it, and, and I hear lots of talk of, well, Normal does it this way. We're not Normal. We are Bloomington. And we also aren't saddled with the debt that our friends up in Normal have. Because we're Bloomington, we're not Normal. And so that's my two cents on it, is I don't think we should be paying someone to do what we should be doing and our elected officials should be doing.
Councilmember Montney.
I just wanted to clarify, we belong to a number of organizations that we have noted on our website do just in fact what you're talking about lobbying on our behalf, including national organizations, the International City County Management Association, the National League of Cities, et cetera. And as you look at their materials, they indicate that's what they do on behalf of your membership. They look out for our interests. The firm that we're looking to hire, I believe, represents organizations as diverse as T-Mobile and AARP, and the largest municipal government in the United States, which I believe is Los Angeles County. So when I think about like a bespoke service to really get to know us organically and unique needs that we would have, I'm just not seeing how that would factor in and justify a $270,000 expenditure.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Thank you, Mayor. Just on a, on a note of having navigated a lot of state and federal grant opportunities in my professional work, I understand the amount of knowledge and networking and access, relationship building primarily, this kind of thing takes. But, but more importantly, I think this is an opportunity to have a pointed relationship with officials. And if you look at Exhibit A, the description of services at the end of the, that part of the packet, one of the bullets is to arrange meetings for city-elected officials and personnel with congressional members, staff, and federal agency officials. These folks are, are practiced in intentionally looking at ways that we could leverage funds so that the tax, tax dollars that we've already contributed at the state and federal level are coming back here. The other thing that the description of services provides is accountability. And there's a lot of information here about what they have to demonstrate to us so that we, we know that these dollars are being invested in such a way that we will get funds coming back to, to help us fund what we are prioritizing. So I, I think it's, it's not going into, that return on investment will be much greater in the end. So I appreciate the excellent questions that are raised about this, but I will be supporting it this evening.
Councilmember Becker.
So real, real quick, I agreed with the questions wholeheartedly. And I also look at it, we should not have to spend this money. I find it ludicrous that we have to spend this money to get a result because of what Grant said and because of what Sheila said. The reality is, maybe, maybe I'm naive in saying we shouldn't have to. Maybe we do have to spend it to get results. So I'm going to ask the question differently to you, Billy, or to someone that knows more than I do. Are you confident that if we spend this money, that each year we will bring back more than $90,000 in additional grant money so that in effect, we are ahead, so that we make a profit on our investment? Should we have to spend it? Hundred percent no. Am I sure which way I would go yet? Actually, no. I'm not sure which way I'll vote. But I'd like to know how you feel about the financial beast.
It's a great way to answer the, ask the question. I would not sit here and say to you that I can guarantee that our disagreement would guarantee us $90,000 each and every year. What I will say to you is that the services provided, in, in our opinion, are well worth the cost of that, both in terms of advocacy. It's not, as I said when I started, it isn't simply about securing funding. It's also about advocacy. It's also about making sure that our priorities, as laws are being made, are before both our legislators, our own delegation, but also folks who are perhaps aren't our direct representatives and senators, who are also a part of the decision-making process. And so, and the work that they do in those arenas are also critical to us making sure that our voices are heard. And I'd like to address for a minute, Councilmember Walsh's comment about the town of Normal. My, my point of bringing up the town of Normal was simply because Councilmember Crumpler had asked whether or not there are other communities who utilizes, utilize the services of lobbyists. So in answering his question, that is why I gave that answer. And I also think that it was important for me to mention that they have in fact been successful in securing funding, as we all know, for some of their, their priority projects. And so to your question, I would be naive to sit here and say, yes, you will receive, we will receive $270,000 over, over the course of next year, based on our interviews with companies, based on our reviewing of their track record, based on our conversations with others who utilize this kind of service. I would bet that we will. But I can't sit here and say to you that that is the case because it's not ultimately my decision.
Thank you. And so we'll go with Councilmember Kribba, and then Councilmember Crumpler, and Councilmember Montney. I, I didn't keep track of time. I don't know where we are.
Consent agenda items don't have a timing assigned to them.
Yeah, you know, I need to get another sip of water. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I hundred percent agree with Councilmember Emig's comments. Especially lately, there's a lot of federal dollars out there that, that are available. And I don't think we, we step up to the plate as well as we should unless we have a federal lobbyist to help us with that. I do think it's a necessary evil, like Nick referenced, Councilmember Becker referenced. So I will move to approve the motion as, the motion is presented. So I will move to approve the motion as, the motion is presented.
I'll second.
There wasn't a motion.
I don't think there was.
No, there wasn't a motion yet.
So I move.
You want to move?
I move, yes.
Oh, okay, all right. Sorry, I kept thinking that you were seconding.
No, I'll second.
And you're second, okay. And we have a couple more people who want to.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just would like to point out, if you look at, again, back to the list of clients that this. Lobbying company represents, and it's, it's, it's a large group and a lot of folks, a lot of communities on the West Coast, California, Oregon. And I noticed that a lot of the communities are paying less than $90,000 for the same, I assume would be the similar services. So again, I just wonder about the amount that we're investing in this. I understand the importance of advocacy. I certainly want, you know, any. Competent group lobbying for this municipal city of Bloomington. I just wonder about where the $90,000 came from. Maybe Deputy City Manager, if you could respond, please.
A lot of what other communities are paying is perhaps determined by when those agreements were entered into. You know, agreements that were entered into before perhaps were at a different rate. They are perhaps also providing a lesser level of service than we're asking for here. We're asking, as I said, both for the, I keep saying advocacy for that, but also for. The, the assisting with us in identifying funding opportunities as well. So there, there, there are different agreements will have different levels of service. So to compare the dollar amount. It is a difficult thing to do because we don't know perhaps what those other communities are paying for. The other thing I'll say to you is that, while you mentioned communities on the West Coast, there are others in the Midwest. I know, I think Wichita, Kansas. Is one of the communities that's represented by Thorn Run. The other thing I'll say is that. We are the only community in the state of Illinois that they would be re, representing at this time, which I think is important.
Okay. Councilmember Montney and then maybe we'll call it a day or.
My question is to clarify the emphasis on them providing advocacy for us as an entity. As what we're hearing now is our, their only client in Illinois. Since advocacy is the basis for trade association memberships and memberships like the ones that we have listed under lobbying on our website. I'm interested if you can provide an example of a current issue where you would be looking to them for advocacy. In such a way that it would be not covered by the agreements that we already have with municipal league, league of cities, et cetera.
The thing that I think is important is to, to go back to one of the questions that Councilmember Ward has and that. Those would be issues that you as a council would determine. And I, I think that's part of the work that you would be doing is to help them to determine what those issues would be. You all, the, the, the elected body has different issues that you believe are important. So it would be in part up to you. To determine what that agenda would be and those things that they would advocate for. The other thing I would say is that in terms of. Issues to advocate for. Part of that comes as part of the process of lawmaking. Where, so if they are, for example, become aware of something that is occurring or that is being considered. Then it's important for us, them to let us know what those things are, so we know that those things are coming up. And to determine what our position is on that type of thing, so that we can get before folks to let them know. Our position on those types of things. But the big thing, the big, the, the primary answer to your question, in my opinion, is that those are things that you as an elected body. Will be determining for this group if, if this passed.
Well, I think to Councilmember Ward's comments earlier, it seems a bit the cart before the horse. We're retaining a firm to advocate and yet we haven't consented that there's something that we would specifically and uniquely. Want some firm to advocate for that's not covered in other arrangements that we already have with the lobbying organizations that we already pay services for. So I'll leave it at that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote. Who are we missing? Okay, so it's. Four nays and four yeses. Could you announce the nays?
Councilmember Urban, Councilmember Walsh, Councilmember Becker, Councilmember Crumpler and Councilmember Montley.
Yeah, I said five nays, right?
That's five, yeah, five and five four.
Moving on to item eight A. And item eight A. Is a consideration and action on a resolution approving the fiscal year 2024. John M. Scott Healthcare Trust Grant awards and programmatic agreements in the amount of. Seven hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-four and sixty-eight cents. For category one and two grants as requested by the Economic and Community Development Department. And I'm going to turn over to Deputy City Manager Tyson, Tyus, sorry. For introductory remarks.
Sure, thank you. You all are familiar with the John M. Scott program and the, the levels of funding that they provide. We're representatives from the Economic and Community Development Department who are here to speak to some of the proposed changes. To that program and obviously be available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, Council and Deputy City Manager. Tonight, the John M. Scott Healthcare Commission presented an investment of over $700,000 towards healthcare needs. And for healthcare needs of under-resourced community members. I want to take a moment to thank everyone involved in this year's process, especially the leadership of Commission Executive Officers Karen Stip. Kana Wilkinson, Karen Schmidt and Elaine Hardy. I also want to thank the entire commission for the many hours of hard work they volunteered. A special thank you to our grant specialist, Joni Gerard, for her work with the commission as well. And with that, I will turn it over to Commission Chairperson Karen Stip to present this year's investment.
It's been my privilege to chair the John M. Scott Commission this year to be a part of. This group of commissioners as well as some ad hoc members who attend our meetings regularly. You can go ahead and turn to the next slide if you want to and we can go over the grants that we have looked at. So the category one grants, those are, are three-year grants. We didn't actually look at grants this year. They, those were rolled over from, from the previous year. The category two grants is what we've spent time on this year, the community health priority grants. The, their annual commitments and they're split between the capital and the program grants. Category three grants are for emergency and emergent needs. And those we haven't, we don't have a capital or category three grant specific to bring to you tonight. But if you'll go ahead and turn to the next slide, we'll look at the category two grants. And the RFP went out in September of this year. The community information session was held via Zoom in September. Applications were open from September 6th to October 18th. We had four meetings in which we evaluated the, the applications. And we had our funding recommend, recommendations with the folk, with the full. Commission on December 28th to make approvals of those to bring to you tonight. You can go ahead and turn to the next slide. So the category two, the capital grants, $520,000 were requested. The program grants, over a million dollars were requested. Nine applications for capital, twenty-four for, for program. The, the capital grants are a little more difficult to justify. We're looking for. We're looking for things that agencies are wanting to do on the ground right now to decrease the disparities that exist in our community. That was about a 22% increase over last year for the number of, of requests that we had. We had about that same level of decrease in funding that we had available to, to apply to those grants. You can go ahead and turn to the next slide. So category one rollover from, from last year is $250,000. In addition to category two capital, three, $34,000, category two program, $430,000. For a total investment of 712,364. And I think that says $68. My eye appointment is in a, is in a couple of weeks. Again, it was a decrease. It was about a 22% decrease from what we had to invest last year. The, the number of readers for the applications, I believe there were four readers for each application. We discussed the, discussed the, the applications at length, looking at opportunity cost. If we give $600 per child for food on this grant. What's that going to get them a year from now? So lots of detailed kinds of discussions that we had in making these decisions. And then I think there's a final slide. So we, we work in cooperation with a community health improvement plan that the health department and the hospitals put together. The three big categories are access to care, healthy active, healthy eating, active living or heals. And behavioral health, which includes mental health and substance abuse. We have grants in each of these three categories. When Judge Scott wrote the trust for us. To benefit from, he was looking particularly at hospitals, building a hospital. We no longer need a hospital. So what we're looking at are the social determinants of health. In his quest to build a hospital, he was wanting to serve people who were of, of every income level. Who are particularly of low income levels, minority groups. And so we've, we've transferred that to focus on not just healthcare per se, which is probably. In large part too big an ask for, for a funding source of this, of our size. But looking at social determinants of health to enjoy, to address the root causes of disparities. And those are our, those, that's where we are with our, with our recommendation to this council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Crivell?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion, then I have a few follow-up questions. I move to approve.
Can we get a second first?
I'll second.
No, I haven't, I was, I hadn't completed my motion.
Oh, oh, sorry, I thought you were.
I'm being long-winded there. A motion to approve eight A as presented.
I'll second.
That's it.
So yeah, I just wanted to quickly comment and, and ask a few questions, but I, it's really great. What the trust does for, for this community, really does a lot for a number of, of nonprofits. Wanted to ask just a few numbers, questions. Do we have more applicants this year than last?
We did, we did have more applicants.
And then we had less funding because of the stock market. How many of the, the organizations receiving amounts are new this year?
Oh.
Approximately. Sorry.
There are. Where's, I lost William. Do you have?
I, I believe there are two new organizations this year. Milestones Early Learning Center and Girl Scouts of Central Illinois.
Okay, thank you.
There are some new programs within organizations, but completely new organizations too. Thank you, William. I just have to say that William makes our, makes our job very easy. He has facts and figures in front of us all the time. And we really appreciate his work and Joni's work.
Sorry, really quickly, Mayor, if you don't mind, I did William a disservice. Could you, you please introduce yourself and let everybody know who you are?
Yeah, William Bessel, I'm the Grants Coordinator within the Community Enhancement Division for ECD.
Thank you. Are there other questions? Okay, seeing none, I think we can vote.
Mayor, just for the record, Councilmember Urban recused herself because she sits on one of the nonprofit boards involved. So she's left the room and we'll get her when we're done here.
Yeah. Thank you. Now I'll take another sip of water to wake me up. Okay, the item passes. There are no nays to announce. She coming? No, maybe. We thought you went home. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item eight B, consideration and action on a resolution adopting the city council retreat final report. Identifying strategic priorities and associated milestones as compiled by Strategic Government Resources as requested by the Administration Department. And turning it over to Deputy City Manager Billy Tyus.
Thank you, Mayor. You all know, over the course of a couple of days in September of last year. You spent quite a bit of time coming up with, with lists of priorities and initiatives and things that you wanted the community of Bloomington. Community of Bloomington to be known for. Result of those two days was. In essence, the document that you have before you tonight. You did obviously have a review session back in October, just to sort of talk over what you saw and what, what, what you learned during those days. The next step in the process of moving forward with a plan for how to do the work and how we will report what is happening related to your priorities. Is for you all to consider and hopefully approve the document tonight. That is what is recommended by SGR, which is Strategic Government Resources, who facilitated those sessions. But as I said, the next step is to consider and approve the document. Once that is done, if that is done, the next steps are for us to work together as a staff and work with you to determine. A work plan, as I said, in terms of identifying those things that we will move forward with initially and in the process. And how we will continue to report back to you and work with you and get input from you as part of that work plan in this process. Happy to take any questions.
Motion, maybe?
I'd like to make a motion to approve as is.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Walsh, second by Councilmember Emig. Questions or?
There's nothing in there, in, in the packet about priorities. As a matter of fact, it actually says no particular order. There's no priorities. When, when will that take place?
If you approve this tonight, those are the next, those are part of the next steps and we'll start immediately on identifying those priorities.
And will this, in the packet, it says, this is like a 10-year project. Will it be reviewed on a regular basis, maybe every three years?
I would say it'll be reviewed probably more, more frequently than that. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. It will have to be.
Okay. Some of the objectives are already in place and have, or have been accomplished. One of the things that concerns me is that some of the objectives fall outside of this city's purview. As a municipality. One example is Market Street is state highway. Obviously, we'll have to coordinate with them. But things like job training, that would be the purview of the private sector unless it's an employee for the city. Support of first-time home buyers. I don't think the city should function as a bank. And it says creating businesses. And it says creating businesses. I don't think that the city. Would be responsible for creating businesses. We have the Economic Development Department that attracts businesses. Works to retain them and expand them. So again, that is already being done in the. In the community by the city. For the reasons that some of these objectives fall outside of the city purview. I had made the comments at the retreat. I made the comments at the committee in the hall, and I will repeat them here. I I can't support this document as long as the objectives that do not fall within the purview of the municipality are included.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward?
Yes, I would simply like to point out that the Market Street. Item comes under revitalizing older communities. It does not speak specifically to street repair. And that is what is outside of our purview. Market Street is in our purview. It happens to be in Ward Seven. A solid part of Ward Seven, and so revitalizing the Market Street corridor in terms of. Economic development and in terms of of the the people who live there, they are very much within our purview.
Can I respond? I don't want to get into wordsmithing.
Yeah, let me let me say something. I, you know. And I guess that's probably what you're you're going to say. I I I hope we don't get into too much back and forth, you know, about the. The the document because it's, you know, we, there was sort of an agreement at the retreat, and I don't want to revisit. Too much of it, so.
Well, I just want to say that some of the. Wordsmithing, some of the words. It's important for future staff and future councils that the. Wording is very clear as Alderman Ward pointed out. It's not just Market Street, it's the Market Street neighborhoods or surrounding neighborhoods. It's not just Market Street. So again, I don't want to get into wordsmithing. I am, I can't support the document as long as there is. Items that are not within the purview of the municipality.
Okay. I think is, okay, the link is ready. Yes, we we are. Hence, the link is ready. Okay, so the item passes. There's one name to announce.
Councilmember Bowlin.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to the Finance Director's Report. Item number nine, and. I don't know if Deputy City Manager Tyres has introductory remarks or.
I do not. Scott, if you don't mind, Scott, take it away.
Introducing Scott Rathman, Director of Finance. That's the introductory remark.
Almost went into an Elvis. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we are eight months into the year, but we are not going to be putting forth the projection quite as yet. So this this presentation is going to be similar to the one we did in November. We skipped December because of the shortened month. Financials usually are not completed until about the third week of the month related to bank reconciliations and processing. The local business tax returns. So eight months in, it's sixty-seven percent, sixty-seven percent that we use kind of as a trending. But we're still only six or seven months in on some of the major tax revenues. So we're gonna, we're gonna wait one more month. Some of the information you'll be hearing next month when we do the projections and we'll start getting into some of the FY twenty-four budget commentaries. There's there's been a lot of delay on expenditures specifically related to capital expenditures. I mean, we're currently not not digging FY twenty-four yet, but we're looking at, we might be rolling about two million dollars worth of equipment. Purchases into next year. So, you know, that'll translate into, you know, reserves, better reserves exiting this year. But we'll be utilizing those next year, and so there's still a lot of stuff moving right now. So next slide, please. So the 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 kind of the tone, the feel for the financials is the same as a couple of months ago. Our revenues are still trending very well. They're 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 hot from the hot economy and the inflation. You know, with expenditures, it'll still be in a concern, but you know, a delayed impact on that. So I just want to highlight, you know, we've. The year-to-date budget variance for home rule, sales tax, state sales tax, utility tax. Getting an echo here, food and beverage tax and local use tax. Those are all significantly. Positive variance for the year, you know, and we have a strong local economy and we're fortunate for that, but being driven by inflation. Wanted to highlight, you know, that the state sales tax, you know, there's there's the the grocery tax suspension. You know, it it runs from July of last year through June of this year. But but the city is still receiving its one percent share of grocery taxes. The state is making that up, so that is not impacting. Our state sales tax revenues. So you can see, you know, we're significantly over over budget, positive variance in state sales tax. We've monitored that in finance just to make sure, because the the Department of Revenue is doing those calculations. The grocery stores are still supposed to be reporting that, even though they're not collecting it, just to, you know, confirm that we're getting those those sales tax revenues. And then on the utility tax side, I wanted to highlight that, you know, that's been kind of running under, you know, the last couple of years. Because of telecom decreases in telecom tax, but it's it's over this year, a year-to-date due to the natural gas. Natural gas prices, I I looked up a year ago compared to where they are right now. Looks like it's been about a fifty-five percent increase, you know, in in price, you know, natural gas and, you know, that's the double edged sword I've been talking about a lot. Over the last few months, positive for the city, not so positive for the residents and the consumers of our area. But, you know, all in all, if you look at the bottom of the year-to-date budget variance, you know, we're we're seven million. Better than budget at at this point in time, so very positive. Again, next month, we'll talk about those projections and. You know, what may be occurring and pushing those expenditures out into into next year and having to utilize some of those extra revenues then. Next slide, please. The revenue slide, next month, this will show the projection for the year. We've added the prior year-to-date actual to to show a comparison here, so I kind of want to just highlight a couple of of lines. The taxes, you can see this year we're at sixty-four point six million dollars year-to-date. Last year, we had sixty-three point five. So again, you know, that's some of those revenues running hotter than last year based on inflation. Charges for services, that is significantly over last year, eleven point three million almost versus eight point five. A lot of that has to do with. Ambulance fees, and you're going to see kind of an offset down in the expenditures related to the the full amount gets billed on an insurance basis. And then it gets adjusted, and we're booking that to expenditures right now. We are going to talk to our auditors about just adjusting that to revenues, but kind of getting into the weeds here. But that's really related to that G-MET program that we've mentioned a few times. It's the Ground Emergency Medical Transport. That's a federal. Program is related to reimbursement of Medicaid expenditures for ambulance crews. So it's it's had a very positive impact on the city. And then investment income. You can see four hundred thirty-five thousand dollars year-to-date versus a whopping nine thousand dollars last year. When interest rates were down near zero. So, you know, we have the investment advisors, but, you know, and all honesty and transparency to it, it's just interest rates are up. I mean, even the money we don't have with our advisors, we're in a local government investment pool with the state, it's it's over four percent right now. So, you know, that that's a good, you don't, you don't want to, you know, drive your your business model on investment earnings, but, you know, we'll take that. That's that's very positive. Next slide, please. Expenditures, again, you know, we'll be we'll be putting in the projections, but just to highlight a couple of items, you know, compared to prior year. That capital expenditures line, that's six hundred sixty-one thousand. You can see that our budget was five point six million. So this is the challenge, this was with finding equipment. Last year, we had one point five million. So, you know, not a real significant difference, but you can see that the plan for the year was significantly higher than where we are right now. And then other expenditures, the two point three million versus last year, one point five million. That's those adjustments to some of those ambulance runs, or we're billing at the higher rate, and then it still comes in with an insurance adjustment. So higher revenue, a little offset with the expenditures, but still doing very well related to that that federally funded program. Next slide, please. Enterprise funds, you know, the revenues always track, that's that's at the bottom part of the of the screen here. You know, I always kind of comment on solid waste, that 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 loss year-to-date has been coming down. Again, to highlight the way our financials are presented to council and the public. The the commitments slash POs, we refer to those as encumbrances as well, beginning of the year, landfill fees, et cetera. If we if we sign a contract, we show that as expended right away. So with the solid waste, you know, it showed a huge loss at the beginning of the year, and then as the revenues come in during the year. That loss starts to to subside or decrease, so you can see it's at a one sixty-two right now. But, you know, the challenges with the enterprise funds are really, you know, they're they're feeling those expenditures too, the chemicals, all that stuff's. A lot more expensive, so I I've used this term where you can't control expenses, but you can try to manage them. So you manage them with with timing, negotiations with your vendors. I think, you know, it was several months ago, but, you know, we had a chlorine vendor where we had to adjust the contract, you know, we don't want to harm our vendors either. You know, there's just certain situations where if we we hold people to contracts, you know, sometimes it's it's going to put them in a serious pinch, so we try to work with our vendors as well. So, you know, a lot of a lot of communications occurring, a lot of looking at the the timing of projects and equipment. And then next slide, please. And then just this one is just to remind the community that these these reports are online at that address. There's also some more detailed reports out there as well, so I'll pause for questions.
Questions, comments? Smiles wave? All right, thank you, Scott. Oh, you had a question? Okay, okay, sounds good. You're off the hook. I saw you shaking for a moment. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Deputy City Manager's discussion.
Thank you, sir. I think we've got a couple of slides tonight, but thank you, Mateus. Tour de Chocolat downtown Bloomington, February third, from five to eight P M. Encourage everybody to turn out for that. The other thing I want to do is to thank Ferrero for their investment in this event. I think it says a lot about them as a company, that they are willing to invest in events like this, to show their support for this community. And so, again, want to thank them and want to encourage people to come out to the Tour de Chocolat on February third from five to eight P M. Next slide, please. And the indoor farmer's market, February eighteenth, as you can see, from nine A M. to twelve P M. Gross and Motors Arena. Again, encourage people to turn out for that event as well. It's always, we're seeing incredible turnout for those events. And again, it's 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 a great thing for our community, so I think that's all we have tonight.
Thank you. Under Mayor's discussion, not much. Just wanted to thank Chief Simmington again for the Lights On program. Deserve an applause. Thank you. For those of you who might not be familiar, this is a program where whenever a police officer. Stops somebody for a broken light on their vehicle. They are handed a voucher that would allow them to to go and get it repaired. Instead of getting a ticket, so it makes for a much more positive interaction. With, you know, between motorists and police officers. And this is a program that was started, I believe, in Minnesota, right, Minneapolis. And now it's been expanded to a number of different. Areas in the country, and I believe we are the second city in Illinois to do, number one, say second? Okay, all right, second. So again, want to thank you for identifying the program and. And helping to bring it to to Bloomington. It's fantastic. And and it also highlights the, a lot of the positives that you you've done in terms of. Community engagement and and bringing about more positive interactions with our residents. So we're very thankful for that. Okay, all right. Are there comments from council members? No, okay, that is awesome. I think we are moving on, then. We we do have an executive. Session. Have a handy dandy script. That. My good friends in legal provide for me. So I'm going to ask for a motion to enter into executive session under section two C twelve of five I L C S one twenty. To discuss a claim settlement.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, second by Councilmember Becker. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Walsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Becker?
Yes.
Councilmember Urban?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Crumpler?
Yes.
Okay, council is entering into executive session per section two C twelve of five I I L C S one twenty. To discuss a claim settlement. The room must be cleared during executive. Okay, we are now back in open session and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Bowlin. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Eme. All those in favor, sitting in front by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, aye, okay, we are adjourned. See you.